Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the votes for one meeting to order. We'll say we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. I'd like for approval of the agenda.
Go on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item five, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items interviewed by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to item six. Discussion and consideration possible swearing-in appointment of Michael Bell to the vacant trustee position to expire April 2021. Any discussion? Nothing? Okay.
Move to approve?
Yep.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lynn's gonna swear you in now, Mike.
You're gonna raise your hand on the seat. I am Michael Bell.
I am Michael Bell.
Who has been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Who has been appointed to the village of trustee.
In and for the village of New Glares.
In and for the village of New Glares.
In Green County.
In Green County.
But has not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But has not yet entered in the duties thereof.
Swears that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swears that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
Go to the board, Mike.
Thank you. You'll be shocked. I figured it was fun to be here, but it's not fun to be here.
Okay, item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Motion number two. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, motion carries. Item eight, public works, public safety. Item eight, consideration, discussion, journeyman lineman and foreman wage rates. Right?
So as hopefully most of you are aware, we did have a resignation at the utility. Mike left us to go to Evansville, their utility over there. This is the second apprentice that we've had leave shortly after achieving their journeyman certification. And for that reason, staff is recommending to recruit for full journeyman lineman to fill the position. After reviewing the wages at municipal utilities and consulting with WPPI, we determined New Glares' wages are not competitive enough to recruit a qualified candidate. WPPI, when I asked them, said that if we posted it, the wage we're offering, we wouldn't get a single applicant. And so after reviewing that, the recommendation before you is to authorize staff to advertise the journeyman lineman position at a wage of $35 an hour. Currently, that wage is just above $30 an hour and recommending approval of resolution 19-29 to adjust the line foreman position to a wage of $36 per hour to maintain internal equity. There is a memo included in your packet with additional information, as well as a chart that details some of the wages surrounding us. It doesn't include all of them. It also doesn't include wages such as MG&E and Alliance. Those aren't public, but we have heard that they're offering well above $40 an hour at lineman. Even raising it to the $35 an hour mark isn't a guarantee that we'll be able to find somebody to really be at the top of the mark, or we'd be looking at more at the $39 to $40 an hour range to be the most competitive we could be. But seeing as it's a significant increase, I thought I should at least try and recruit at this level, which I think makes us much more competitive and increases the likelihood that we will get a qualified applicant to apply.
So can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So what would be wrong with if we tried to help someone else get their journeyman again and then raise the rate when they complete that? I mean, why do you want to step away from that option?
So we currently have one lineman, and there's only so much work that a lineman can do on their own.
Right.
And then for the first couple of years of their apprenticeship, they really can't do very much to assist the lineman in doing the work. A lot has to go in before they can really complete the type of work that needs to be done. Kevin is available if you want to speak at all to how long it takes to get an apprentice up.
It's almost getting towards four and a half to five if you talk to any other muni, because that's the only person who gets to know the system. And before I can get him up in the bucket at all for even high voltage, probably three years. That's after, you know, he starts. So like Drake said, so that's why we're looking at trying to advertise for journeyman. It's gonna be very hard, extremely hard. So I guess that's where we're up against. We used to have three and a half linemen. Now we're down to one and a half linemen. And we're, you know, gonna be investing a lot of money in the utility to go forward, which is the right thing to do for the future of the utility. You know, we're doing it, you know, at the substation, that project. So it's about, if we're gonna look forward to keeping the utility going viable, it has, and I'm not looking out for myself, I'm looking out for the utility. So it isn't about me, but that's the reality.
Right.
And, you know, Drake did some checking, and he knows that, and even 35 is kind of a shot in the dark, but that's pretty big. I know it's kind of sticker shop to probably do guys, but, you know, this, you know, that's unfortunately, even the bigger munis that are paying close to 40, the guys are leaving. Especially after Act 10 happened, everybody just bails. Because investors, the line guys, and we don't expect to even get paid close to that, but they're making 45, 46. And when Act 10 went in, you know, the munis used to, the benefits were always good, kind of offset some of that, but with Act 10 going in with the retirement and everything, it kind of took that edge away. So even the big munis are having a hard time, and they're paying in the low 40s. I was just overstoned today for training, those guys are making 40. Broadhead just lost a guy, you know, that's just, that's the reality of the business. I won't say unfortunately, but that's what the rate is.
So with knowing that that's gonna be a problem, is, my concern is as if that we, if we're gonna recruit for and try to get a person that's already trained.
Yes.
Sounds like there might be a shortage of them, even if we offer a different rate. So then, is there an idea of how we could have somebody coming up the pipe at the same? Yeah, but, because that's what I'm concerned about, is it's unfortunate that you put all that investment into somebody who didn't love.
In the future, we would like to also add an apprentice.
I think sooner, right. If we do get a journeyman, I think, and Drake and I just briefly discussed it, that we just can't say, okay, we got a journeyman, everything's good. We gotta start thinking about, okay, we need to get another apprentice going here.
Right.
You know, for after hours, everything. I got my call this week, but I'm going away this weekend.
Well, right, you could say that.
I'm going on vacation in September to see my daughter.
Absolutely.
Out west. I got some time in October, so. You know, mutually it's set up for their storms or, you know, obviously natural disasters, other communities coming out with some, or I've got a good relationship with them, Broadhead, but it's not set up just to come down and help for everyday activities. That's not, that's what it's for. I mean, they would gladly come down and help right now, but they might do it once or twice, but after a while, they're gonna go, hey, why isn't New Glares running their utility? Why, basically, are we babysitting, have the babysitter? You know, I know we get to a point where you can't have a guy, you know, five, six guys, that's not feasible. But like I said, when I first hired, we had three and a half linemen. Now, because Jason can only do low voltage stuff, like put a house meter in, do low voltage. That's all he's capable of.
So he's the one you're calling your half man?
Yes.
Okay. And then the gentleman that we just had that was a journeyman, he was like another half man?
No, he just, he just got his journeyman's car, yeah, actually in June.
But then, but then he's.
He would have never even thought about leaving if he was making the money. He would have never even thought about it. But this is something that should have been happening a long time ago.
So what do we have in terms of parameters for incentive to stay? I mean, obviously, you're at $36 an hour, but do we have, is it more defined than $36 an hour? I mean, once we get them, is there?
Well, we do have the compensation classification study that will be completed. And as part of that, they'll have a recommended pay plan, which would include regular step increases to keep them competitive in the market.
And that would stay competitive then?
As long as those, as long as the wages were adjusted appropriately over the years is how you would remain competitive if we fell back into the habit of not increasing throughout time.
That was my concern, that we pay $36.
We would fall behind over time again. But that's the case with any, any position in the market.
Sorry, if we decide to approve the 36.
Well, there's two different, yeah, two different approvals.
Right.
One is for the person we handle.
Would we have more, we have more defined parameters around, should that particular individual stay? Or will it follow, what I'm saying is it follow the salary schedule that's already set in place?
We do not have a salary schedule in place.
But we are.
But we will.
That's part of the current project.
Right, yeah. Includes the utility.
Correct.
Okay.
So is there, is there any inducement? I'm just, you probably don't even know, but is there any inducement or total, I'm not going there, disadvantage for somebody out there in the market at, say, $35 an hour to say, I'd rather go to New Glares than if they work for whoever?
There could be, we're so, we've talked about that. I mean, our pay scale so far could have to take, if I'm answering your question, if I'm taking your question right. You mean about like a journeyman coming here? Why would a person come to New Glares to work? Is that what you mean for 35?
Yeah.
I think it's gonna have to take that right person, maybe geographically, maybe where they're working and they want to get maybe closer to home. That would weigh, outweigh. But Broadhead had the guy that works for MG&E that lives in Broadhead, and he came and interviewed, I just talked to the guy today, the superintendent, and he just come through it because it was $13 more an hour he's making in Madison. So even though he would have loved to stay on or work in Broadhead, he would still commute. So it's, so if we do, I'll put this out there too. So if we do get a journeyman, you know, that applies, I think we're gonna bet him pretty good because it's gonna take something very special to get him here. I'm not saying it can't happen at all. It might just take that special thing, hey, I wanna get down to here, I'll take a hike up. So my, my hopes of trying to find that right person is gonna be very hard. And I guess, I don't know what kind of timeframe, you know, we're looking at.
As you think about it right now, whole rescue, we're done. He's up by himself. We have Jason, if Jason's available. But the problem is, is even if fire gets called, fire's not going up by life power until somebody restrains that power. And that's gonna be calling an all call to align energy, whoever's closest is gonna get her.
Well, let's speak to Danny's point about the future.
Yeah, so right now, the issue at hand is we have to get him some help, and we gotta at least try these new wage rates. And then maybe we can look at, can we still bring in an apprentice? And try to, you know, the incentive being, well, help you get your license, right? Is that kind of the idea?
Yeah.
And then the idea is, is that once that person gets their license, we need to have some sugar added up so that they don't flip on us, right? And then that's kind of what.
I mean, we haven't signed a contract here, but like Mike had, but the pay differential is so great that, you know, even, you paid that, even paid that a contract for often six months, you know, to a year easily.
Right.
So there's really, it was like, oh.
How long do you normally keep journeyman in the past?
Well, me, because I live here. But we haven't kept any, we haven't kept any since I've been here, except Scott retired.
Like, how many years do they, they go through before they expand on to somewhere else?
Well, it all depends, I guess, it kind of depends on where they're from and if the pay's competitive. Mike told me, he said, I would have stayed longer, but the pay was just too big a difference.
He was the lowest paid in his class of 40, of 40 people. His, one of his classmates went to federal, and is now making like 42 bucks an hour.
One of my biggest concerns is, is the time constraints that we have on us right now. I mean, how long are we gonna be able to, to get the ball rolling in, in order to take down a journeyman?
Usually takes at least a month to get, if you have a successful recruitment, it takes at least a month to get somebody in.
We're pushing limits there, aren't we, Joe?
I don't know how bad I can restrain this, and my respects to Kevin is, Kevin's been here a long time. And the worst thing that I could tell to this lady behind me is something happened to Kevin because at work, we didn't have it right. And for me, that, that's a lot. His job is a specialty job, there's no doubt about it. And that's why I respect everything of Kevin. But, and Kevin's at the point now where, you know, he was, we were kind of hoping that Mike would take this on, so, and hopefully someday take over for Kevin.
Right.
But before I was here, before Drake was here, all this kind of stuff, we, we can't help what's going on now.
So a month is really a major safety concern.
Yeah, in a way.
It is, I mean, technically.
He's not even supposed to be up there.
Brown, that's qualified.
Right. I mean, when he goes up in a bucket and I'm the only one there, legally, I'm not even supposed to be by that truck. If something happens up there, I don't know. I'm gonna fall back on my captain, be a fireman, you know? I'm gonna be like, whoa, you know, I gotta call for help and tell them.
And we can, when we post, we can do a roll-in acceptance, and that will review applications as we receive them. So in the first week, we get a great applicant.
I'd like to add an idea, we can bring them in for the interview and expedite that instead of waiting until the end to review it all. We can do that.
As long as we get the applicants, even at, what is it, 35?
Right, there's, it's.
When you think, I want to hear your thoughts, Joe.
My personal opinion is, is good luck. I, I, my personal opinion.
It's not, but not the answer I wanted to hear, Joe.
Well, I know that, but here's the deal. Since I've been here, my biggest fear, I've said it to PAG, I've said to everybody, is my biggest fear was I was gonna lose Mike as soon as he got his journeymans to go to MG&E. MG&E linemen make hundreds of thousands of dollars just because they get overtime, everything like that. And he had a good friend there, and that's what I was more afraid of. I didn't under, I, I, it really didn't, I never expected to go to Evansville. I never expected that. But then, when we heard the family story, I understand it. But my honest opinion is, is since I've been here, Kevin has given me these things called LiveWire. It's a report that we get from our muni. I have seen nothing but journeyman jobs out there on our list from old resumes, and they're paying high, high 30s, high and 40s. And my biggest fear is, where is this guy gonna come from?
Well, my, my fear is too that 35 isn't enough.
And that's my personal opinion, and like Kevin said, the only way you're gonna get somebody like that is it's gonna have to be, let's say it's somebody young that is looking to get a, a step up and maybe say, hey, I can go down there and make 35 bucks an hour. But to move down here, to be here, because that's part of our stipulation too, because they'll be on call, and they have to be here within an hour. I don't know.
So can I just make a suggestion if we make a motion to do what you are proposing? And then at next board meeting, we can relook at this. Is that even reasonable? I mean, like, I think we need to make a motion.
Did we not receive applications before that?
Yes, like, if we, if we feel that nothing has moved in that timeframe, and that's two weeks from now, right? If we feel that nothing has moved, that should be a pretty good indicator that, that this isn't gonna work, and we're gonna have to relook at it, I mean, is that?
So then hopefully, we've got two more weeks, which makes it a month.
You could put that as an agenda item that we.
So we would post it, if it was approved, we'd post it. And what I'm understanding is that if we didn't receive applications that we were comfortable with, we would take that as a sign that the wage rate was still not competitive enough and then alter that, come to the village board to alter that at that time.
So we could expire that by doing that at that next meeting if we still needed to.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I think another, the one thing we haven't mentioned is that, you know, bottom line, cost comes out of the anticipated rate case.
We're gonna have to make a rate case.
In 2020, so.
So we have, we have a way to pay for it.
We're looking at, yeah, yeah.
It's not a happy way.
I mean, it's, it's all coming out of the same pockets, but.
Right.
This is coming out of the utility bill, which.
Right.
I hate to say, you can control it, but you can't.
Well, we have a way to fund it, and we have to take care of an emergency. And to me, I see this as a priority issue. I mean, we have, I mean, literally, it sounds like people's lives on the line, and we can't have somebody on call 24/7, 365, that's unreasonable.
No, we're way behind.
And, right, so we need to at least do something tonight, which is, let's try this. And if this doesn't work, make it where we are going to revisit this next week and have some time maybe to think about some other things and go forward with a better. But obviously, it's gotta go back to what's our public works, public safety committee needs to maybe look.
I'm sorry, nothing against you, but I hear one word that, that upsets me.
Sure.
Try.
Oh, you mean, try this idea?
Yeah, try this, try that, you know? We may be looking realistically a month and a half down the road.
Could be. Did you say that, Kevin?
I mean, it's, like, back to Chuck's question, right, it's hard to, it's something to follow out, right?
Can, can we, we can offer a higher, at this meeting, if the, if the board would like, we can raise, increase the wages more to a 37 and a 38.
I would, I would see, I would like to see at least, what would we say, 35?
35 for the journeyman.
Let's do 36 and 37.
That's the discretion of the board.
What do you mean, 36 and 37? Well. Because we haven't gotten to the. Well, yeah, but one goes in hand with the other.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, but I would say raise the one here to 36 instead of 35. If you look at this chart that Drake has, and, and first you look at the, the current figures, but then you look at Sock City, looking to go to 37 from 34 to 37. Do you know, is it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I don't understand Broadhead's union.
They can only.
Amendment, but they're the only ones that are really out of the market besides us. If these, if these increases go through, and they probably will, because those people are talking the same things we are. Yeah, exactly. So are we still gonna be, we're probably still be a little behind, but it's better to try. I agree with, with your suggestion.
The reason I included the Broadhead union thing in there is it's a little bit of an explanation as to why they're falling behind, and that as they chose to remain united, they can only increase by the CPI index or Act 10, which severely limits their ability to give annual raises.
But that's annual raises, is there anything else that they can, I mean, they can.
They can give bonuses.
Yeah. So they're gonna have to, they're also gonna have to do something. They already lost somebody, right?
Correct.
Well, Mike, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I was just, I would make a motion to raise the starting journeyman to a period of $36 per hour to advertise as such. And did you make that motion? Yes, I'll say.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need to make a motion to raise the?
Well, we're, we're, that's coming in there, yeah.
Now, we.
Do it now.
Oh, okay, that's fine with me, yeah.
So it's just a second motion.
Okay, so make a motion to raise the current position to 38 then, correct?
37.
37, sorry.
If I can suggest the motion to be to approve resolution 19-29 with the amendment that the wage be increased to $37 an hour.
Okay, yes.
I second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item nine, community belt authority. Item eight, consideration, discussion, facade improvement grant application from Don Berg.
Mr. Berg? I can start us out if you'd like.
Okay.
So, Mr. Berg, up here at the CDA. It's a request for the remainder of, the remainder, sorry, funds remaining in the facade improvement grant program, which is just over $4,900. And it's for the replacement of windows on his property on Fifth Avenue. And it will be, it's already received a certificate of appropriateness from the historical preservation committee, and it will more closely resemble the original facade of the building after the project's concluded. The application is attached, it's compliant, the work has not started yet, and the, he has included multiple quotes for conclusion of the project. CDA did recommend approval of it.
Do you know the grand amount specifically?
It's about $4,918 and some odd cents is what's remaining in the fund.
Okay, whatever today's balance is in.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve that application with the remaining outfits.
I would second.
I've seen you've been doing some work down there. And here it says on the first floor, you doing the first floor windows or the second floor windows?
We're doing the first, the second floor window was a year ago. You know, we're doing first floor, we put the jams in, we kind of took them, took some of those enclosures apart and found some jams were there, and we replicated that on the other ones that were missing the jams.
Okay.
So we're asking for the money for the sashes and the glass, basically. There's, it's a couple parts that go in the windows, so we're not quite there yet. But it looks, still looks traditional, kind of like, there's a building just, just on the corner here that's, that's similar to how the windows would, sort of supposed to look. It's just a traditional wood sash with the, with the big pane glass in it.
So you're also talking the big windows on Fifth Avenue, that one, right? So what are, what's in there now?
Right now, it's just plywood.
Oh, okay, that's black and.
Yeah, we took, yeah, just.
Okay, that's.
We're just, that was.
It's better than looking at the plywood.
Yeah, the plywood doesn't look very good, so.
Okay, okay.
Just trying to make it so it's not so.
Such an eyesore, really.
I've heard some good reports about it.
Well, that's good, yeah. Well, if you try it, then you kind of help, I think. You're really happy.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, then item B, consideration discussion, transfer of twenty thousand dollars from TID three to TID four to fund the facade improvement, improvement grant program, okay?
Uh, so TID three was, uh, set up as a donor TID, meaning that, uh, with village board approval, uh, funds from that fund balance can be transferred over to another, uh, TID. This also came before the community development authority, and, uh, they did also, they did recommend approval of it, so this would, uh, go, bring that program back up to twenty thousand dollars, it was originally funded with, uh, with twenty thousand dollars, and that has since been, uh, now has been depleted. So this would make it, uh, continue the grant program and make it available to future applications.
So we're replenishing the fund from grants?
Yeah. The C D A grants, the, they max at five thousand, right?
The application max at five thousand dollars is the max, yeah, for the.
Actual grant.
Yes.
Money. And, um, I didn't have time to check with you on this, um, TID three, TID three is.
Brewery.
But, and TID four is.
Uptown, backtown area, so it stretches all the way up Second Street, and then, you know, Fifth Street, uh, or First Street, sorry, Second Street, and then a little bit back here as well.
So then anyone in the TID four area can apply?
Uh, it's, there are, for example.
Like, guidelines or whatever?
So religious institutions are ineligible to apply, um, residential is ineligible to apply, it's, uh, it's geared towards, uh, commercial, uh, commercial uses.
And they can, so there, so twenty thousand would be basically for five thousand dollar grants that would become available, or if someone wanted less.
There was a smaller project where they were only doing a five thousand dollar, just if they were just painting or something like that, conceivable, but we've always received requests for the full five thousand, or two since I started, and maybe each month for the full, full amount.
Okay.
What was the house?
Uh, house was a five thousand dollar.
Uh, Swisco.
That one would've been before my time.
They, they applied for a loan in front, but they haven't.
It was, it was like three thousand or something.
Have they even taken money yet? Because they haven't done anything.
Yeah.
They got the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Because I asked Lucas about that about two weeks ago.
I'll double check, but.
I mean, I don't remember what he said, well.
Wasn't he just doing a loan?
Yeah, they were just doing a loan, but that was when Andrea was the manager, and then he became the manager, and he didn't really know anything about it, so we may have to check on that, because they should, there's a timeline when they can use money, isn't there?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so.
Motion associates is another one.
Yeah, I know that one.
Yeah, so, uh, maybe we should check on that then and see what.
If Lynn shows a hint, they have.
Huh?
If Lynn.
One's money's getting a little more.
But then, does the box.
But then they should be doing, they should be ordering that on and putting that on, up there.
Yeah, we'll have to look at what that timeline is, too.
They're pretty much in disarray, right? Don't put that, whatever, no, I mean, they've had some.
Change of leadership there and everything, yeah.
Do the unforeseen part.
Yeah.
You know, circumstances, it's, it's pretty serious.
So.
So maybe they could even get a break if they needed it.
Mm-hmm, well, I'm kinda lost now, do we have a motion on this, uh, transfer? Okay. Um.
So, oh, you did a motion to transfer the twenty thousand dollars from TID three to TID four?
Correct, yeah.
I will make a motion.
That was good.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Uh, president's report, committee appointments, okay, um, I'm gonna appoint Tammy to Parks and Rec, and Mike, I'm gonna appoint you to Public Works and Public Safety. Now, the meetings are on Wednes, uh, second Wednesday, whatever, second Wednesday, so there'll be a meeting next Wednesday night then. Uh, Parks and Rec at six-thirty?
Six, six, or six-thirty, depending on.
Oh, yeah, let's look at the.
Parks and Rec is at six, and Public Works is at seven.
So that means at seven then, Mike? Here.
Mike, Mike, like, please.
Mm-hmm. Actually, you can pass it out.
It probably is one in his box.
Oh, okay. Box.
Yeah, yeah, it's a box, okay.
Well, yeah, up there, Mike, will be, the addresses and everything.
Okay.
And then I'll be getting.
Your name will be on it at some point in time.
Right under your name will be your box.
Okay, okay, and I'll be getting your, uh, village year address as well, sounds good.
Yes, I need a motion for that.
Uh, I thought there was.
No, not for that, not for the committee appointments.
What was that, okay.
Item Tammy, I appointed Tammy to Parks and Rec and Mike to.
Oh, okay, I would still move for approval of, uh, committee appointments. Second.
Any more discussion? You're in none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item eleven, administrator's report.
Uh, the school board has requested that we put together another, uh, a, a meeting of the town board, school board, and village board. Um, the meeting date at this time is August nineteenth at six o'clock, and, uh, they've said that we'll end by seven o'clock. That'll be at the, in the, uh, high school library. I, I mean, as soon as, uh, suggested agenda is put out, I will make sure to send that out to everybody.
I'm assuming you would like all of us to be there?
Uh, as long, that would be, that would be the best, and I can work with Lauren.
Okay.
Okay, any further business?
I have a question.
Okay.
As we're starting the budget process, and I have a couple of items I would like to have discussed by the board as a whole, which I think probably in the logical place is through the budget discussion, maybe I'm wrong. And I think, I, I feel like we're really compartmentalized with our committee system in that things get discussed in committee, when they come up to the next board meeting, and we don't get the full briefing, I can get minutes, but, so, my question is, uh, if I have a question on a potential change or potential direction that some committee I'm not on, uh, might want, want to discuss, or that I feel the whole board should discuss, where should we take, should I ask that it be put on the full board agenda? Let's say it comes under Public Works, let's say it comes under Public Safety, whatever. I don't wanna be chasing our tails through committee meeting, board meeting, and then a committee meeting and a board meeting, but I also want these things discussed, uh, before we get lost in the budget.
Mm-hmm. What I've seen done in other communities is, at the village board, we could add an item to the agenda that's called, that says, uh, referrals, which at that time, a, a member could ask to refer a matter either to a specific committee, multiple committees, or to a future board agenda, and so that they can make their desire known, that they would like to discuss.
Bring a manager forward referral to the committee.
Or to a future board meeting. Uh, if they wanted it placed on the next board agenda and wanted it known to the, to the board that it was coming up for discussion.
So would it be more expedient or even, even kosher to just ask the chairperson of the committee?
You certainly, yeah, you certainly could do that as well.
Instead of board, committee, board, committee?
Yeah, absolutely, the chair, yeah, I believe in our organs, it probably states that the chair is, has control over the agenda.
I guess that was my question.
Yeah, so if you made a request.
So then, so then, if, if, if the chair felt it was a problem, so now we're not gonna discuss that, then I, then we would have an option to vote, or is that like to have this referred, the board to vote on it?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And if you, if you weren't able to get a hold of the chair, if you asked me, I could also, um, tentatively place it on an agenda and check with the chair to make sure that, that they would like to discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, I'm slightly confused, so for example, I was just appointed to be the Parks and Rec committee, so I will go to this meeting at six o'clock. If there's any, um, business that's discussed there, the minutes are given to the board like this, right? We receive the minutes from the board, and, and then we make, we make referrals to the board, like this one that said that, uh, you said a committee had said that they would like, the, the development committee would like us to approve this or recommends to us.
Typically, a committee, an item will oftentimes go to a committee first, at which time the committee will discuss it and then make a recommendation, a committee recommendation to the board to, uh, advise them of sorts, I don't know what type of action the committee would like to see the full board take.
So then if the board has any questions on that committee, is that what your concern is, or on that committee's judgment?
I think you were seeking how to get things on.
No, I'm, I'm talking about new items.
Oh, okay.
To get on the agenda?
Because, because like I said, we have, I, we, no, I, 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 I feel we are compartmentalized in our committee system, and, um, so each committee is acting out here.
Right.
And I don't know, I don't know what they discuss, and I can read the minutes, but, I think, you know, unless I go to the, an actual meeting.
Sure.
So, that was my point, but, um, I think your question was, do you get a, if you go, if you go to a meeting, do you get a full view of, of what happened at that meeting, right?
Well, we wouldn't at this meeting, because that was the point of the subcommittee, is, is to take kindly. So for example, we discussed some issues with what would be the Public Works, Public Safety Committee, where we, we made an approval, um, of journeyman wages and different things, but the Public Works Committee is probably gonna do the nuts and bolts of, are we gonna look at expanding the number of staff persons or not, or, so when you say making a referral, we would then, in my opinion, this board would say, we're referring that to the Public Works Committee, and then that group of people will hammer out the detail on that, and then bring it back to us and say, after looking at the concerns that we have, this is what we suggest.
So there's two ways that, yeah, it can happen, as Chuck was saying, it can happen in a predetermined way, where he goes to the chair and says, this is an issue, I think, should be discussed at the committee, can you place it on your next agenda, and then it would be, uh, placed on that committee agenda. Another way it could happen is organically through a board, the board could be discussing an item, determine that it needs further discussion, uh, it's not quite ready for board approval, they could send it back to a committee for additional research, additional discussion, and then it would be back on, that would be the board sending it back.
That's what, what's in this, is a place to do that, is what he was considering?
The board can refer items back to committee at any time, um, if it determines it's not prepared to act, or wants additional information or insight into it. But it doesn't have to come from the board to the committee, the committee can take something up first and then send it to the board.
Okay.
So it doesn't happen.
That's one of the reasons I brought it up, is, you know, some of the, uh, one of the things I would like to see discussed is a probably more of a budgetary item than anything, and, and, uh, although it's somewhat of an operations item, so, you know, we're going into the budget session, and then we have these mandatory timelines that, you know, I don't know what dates are, but Greg has to have these things in.
Right.
At specified times, and it seems like, you know, time flies.
So there's only so much talking time.
Committee to board, and all of a sudden, oops, time's up, you better make a decision in haste, I'd rather not have that happen. Yeah, and, and that was part of the thing for why I made my recommendation to, is rather than push it back to, uh, Public Works, you know, just eating more time, and there's a major safety concern. This, yeah, this is big.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And there will be times where it might make sense that something would have gone, like the journeyman wages, it would make sense that it should've gone to Public Works, but I chose to take it to the full board.
Because of time.
Because of time constraints.
Right, that makes sense, yeah.
Appreciate that, Greg.
Okay.
Anything else? You're in none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.